Okay, thank you everyone for joining us tonight for the Longdale City Council. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order. It is now six thirty-six. This meeting here is in order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call. Madam city clerk.
Okay. Mayor Protem Cuevas.
Present.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask councilmember Pat Kearney to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by Pastor George Magalene. He's gonna lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand. Place your right. I'll wait for Mr. Dear to get up. Takes him a second. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Did you want to do the inspiration or?
I can do it for you, but it's your turn tonight.
Well, let's do it together. My name's George. I'm pastor of Hope Chapel.
Pastor, I'm Don Dear. Please make sure.
Likewise. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council, staff, everyone. I'd like to start by just reading a passage of scripture. It's Psalm ninety-one. It's from the King James Version. And I would encourage you, find this in your own bibles, read it, meditate on it, because it speaks about protection. And that's what I'm gonna pray tonight, protection over the good city of Longdale. Also, when you travel, I believe the Gideons still put bibles in the nightstands. Just open it up to Psalm ninety-one. "He that dwelleth in the secret place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. I will say, the Lord, he is my refuge and my fortress, my God, and him will I trust. Surely he shall deliver thee from the snare of the fowler and from the noise and pestilence. He shall cover thee with his feathers, and under his wings shalt thou trust. His truth shall be thy shield and buckler; thou shalt not be afraid for the terror by night, nor the owl that flyeth by day, nor for the pestilence that walketh in darkness, nor for the destruction that wasteth at noonday. A thousand shall follow at thy side, and ten thousand at thy right hand; but it shall not come nigh thee. Only with thine eyes shalt thou behold and see the reward of the wicked. Because thou hast made the Lord, even the Most High, your refuge; there shall no evil befall thee; neither shall any plague come nigh thy dwelling; for he shall give his angels charge over thee to keep thee in all thy ways; they shall bear thee up in their hands lest thou dash thy foot against a stone. Because he hath set his love upon me, therefore will I deliver him. I will set him on high, because he hath known my name. He shall call upon me, and I will answer him. I will be with him in trouble; I will deliver him and honor him. With long life will I satisfy him and show him my salvation." And Father God, we do thank you for the promise of protection, Lord, for each of us here and for this city. We thank you that your eyes upon every person, Lord, and your grace and your mercies is extended toward every citizen of this community. We thank you for our elderly. Pray that you bless them, protect them. Pray for the children of this community. Pray that you bless them, protect them, from the time they're in their mother's womb to the time that they're launched out in life. We thank you for those that you have commissioned to protect us. We ask that you would also protect them. We commit this meeting to you and thank you for all the wisdom and grace dispensed upon your servants. I personally pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Just very quickly, Easter's coming and we want to invite you to Hope Chapel, Sunday, April ninth at ten a.m. We're gonna have Easter in the courtyard, something for the whole family, and brunch afterwards on us. Thank you. God bless you. Thank you Pastor for sharing those words of inspiration. Thank you for always being here. Okay, so we have a presentation. You can just say that, Mr. Dear. We have a presentation now from the West Basin Municipal Water District, a presentation on the drought. I'm gonna introduce to you first, you're elected member of the West Basin Municipal Water District, representing Longdale and the adjacent cities, surrounding cities, the Honorable Donald Dear, Director of the West Basin Water District.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that introduction. I represent most of the cities of Gardena, Hawthorne, and Longdale, and some of the unincorporated areas on the West Basin Municipal Water District Board. Like many of you, I was in city government. I was Gardena Mayor for nineteen years. Didn't quite make the South Bay record. Other people have done that. And your mayor did that. But I have an opportunity to work with local government. Now, West Basin tries to cooperate with our local governments. Now is the time to do it, because we are, despite the rain, we're still in a drought situation and it's gonna continue, I'm afraid, in the next few years. We had a good weather lately for us, water-wise, and some of the reservoirs are filling. But we still have a ways to go. And we still, most important is, we still want everyone to conserve water. And we have many methods of encouraging that, but I won't take away from the program. I'll just mention to the folks that we really need to continue to conserve water. Now, it's my great pleasure to introduce our new general manager, Gregory Reed, who is gonna give the presentation. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Director Dear. And thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Pullen, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the city council members. Again, my name is Greg Reed, general manager from West Basin. Maybe not so new. I was appointed in April of last year. So, almost reaching one year in my tenure here. And I'm happy to be before you to make today's presentation. And here, you can see the title, "Let's Make Longdale Super Califragilistic." And so, while we certainly have enjoyed, you know, the rain that we've seen over the past better part of the month, maybe two months now, and all the wonderful snowpack that we've been able to see. But as Director Dear has indicated, you know, we're not completely out of the drought at this time. And so, let's go ahead and get started in the presentation. Now, do I push the right button? Okay, there we go. So, we'll start first with our mission, which is to provide a safe and reliable supply of high-quality water to the communities that we serve. And for those of you who may be not so familiar with West Basin, we're a wholesale water agency. We deliver water to the retail water companies that then deliver the water to your homes. And so, that could be here, I believe it would be Golden State Water Company that provides the water here in Longdale. And so, we sell the water wholesale to Golden State Water Company. So with that, we, of course, cover seventeen cities and unincorporated county areas from as far north as Malibu and Topanga, to as far south as the Palos Verdes Peninsula, and then the many marvelous communities in between, such as the city of Longdale. And our board of directors includes our very own Director Dear, who is here with us today, representing Division Five, as well as our four other division directors, which includes our current board president, Director Scott Houston, as well as our vice president, Director Desi Alvarez, and then our treasurer, Director Harold Williams, and our secretary, Director Gloria Gray. So, with the conditions that we're experiencing right now, our water year is measured from October through September, and this can potentially mark a fourth year of drought. Now, of course, we've seen significant rainfall, and so that may actually be breaking the back of the drought this year. And so, let's keep our fingers crossed and see that more of that continues throughout the water year. So here, you know, if this were to be the fourth consecutive dry year, we would see that 2022 was the driest winter and spring, you know, on record. As of October first, California entered its fourth drought. But between December and February of this year, we've had really good news with, you know, a wet winter that has doubled the state's snowpack in the Sierra Nevadas. These key imported water supplies continue to experience critical low records. And with climate change, you know, it really forces our water agencies and our cities to adapt to a new reality. Here's a picture that depicts the dry conditions across the state. And you can see, you know, the abnormally dry, you know, indicated, you know, in the yellow. And then you can see some of the severe drought areas, you know, in the orange. So, really a statewide, you know, impact. And so, this impacts both our surface water supplies, as well as our groundwater supplies. I'm sorry, I clicked too many buttons there. So, our primary source of water for the Southland comes from two major sources. The California Aqueduct, also known as the State Water Project, and also the Colorado River Aqueduct. And so, here, the California Aqueduct provides half of Southern California's imported water supply. Between 2021 and 2022, the allocations of water from the California Aqueduct were five percent of what we were entitled to. Five percent of what we were entitled to. And why is that? That goes exactly back to that graph that I showed you, where we had abnormally dry patterns across the state. So, all of the watersheds, the Sierra, you know, Nevada and the snowpack was very minimal, little to no snowpack. And so, there wasn't much in the way of water that can be allocated to the communities. So, we were down at a five percent in allocation. For 2023, we began this water year also at five percent. So, this really is exacerbated by climate change. We have very dry watersheds, where even when we do have runoff, the watershed is so thirsty that the runoff is absorbed into the soil and it doesn't create as much runoff because of that. The other part of the issues, as it relates to climate change, is warmer weather, snowmelt happens earlier in the season, and that happens at a time when, you know, customers may not be ready to consume, you know, the amount of water that is ready to be released from the snowpack. So, the timing of the runoff doesn't coincide with our water demand. And so, these conditions really make it a challenge for water agencies to balance supply with demand, particularly when it's as minimal as what has been occurring over the past few years. So with that, the good news, and I'll point to this final bullet, it says, "Due to the recent storms and increased snowpack," this is where the good news has been very promising. The state has increased the allocation to thirty-five percent as of February. So with all of the atmospheric rivers that we have seen, the snowpack has been tremendous. And so, we're now looking at much healthier conditions from a water supply standpoint for California. So, that's for the State Water Project. Now, when we look at the Colorado River, the Colorado River has been in a consistent decline since 2020. So, you see in the far left-hand of the graph here, you see water levels in the Colorado River Basin dropping precipitously for better than twenty years. And you can see the bands that are shown on the graph, the horizontal lines. That indicates the shortage triggers that we have actually reached. And I think everyone here is probably familiar with the news headlines of what has transpired in Lake Mead, Lake Powell, the other storage reservoirs in the Colorado River Basin. They've been finding vessels, even human remains. And we've all seen those bathtub rings as the water has declined in the reservoirs in the Colorado River Basin. Fortunately, the atmospheric rivers and the storms that we've been seeing here in California have reached into the Colorado River Basin. But you can best believe that it's gonna take many more years of that kind of precipitation for us to reverse the trend that we've seen for better part of twenty years. And this is precisely why what Director Dear had indicated, we're still in this drought. When you compare the Colorado River to the California Aqueduct, the Colorado River has tremendous storage capacity with all of the reservoirs, both within the Colorado River Basin, as well as what Metropolitan Water District has created in terms of the Diamond Valley Lake and other storage assets. So, the ability to fill up those reservoirs have been greatly impacted by this twenty-year trend. Compare that with California Aqueduct. California Aqueduct storage is on a much smaller scale as compared with Colorado. What does that mean? That means that even though we've had significant storms over the past couple of months here in California, another dry year can get us right back to where we are today, because we can deplete that storage much more rapidly here in California as compared with the Colorado River Basin. So, the need really is to restore the health of the Colorado River in a significant way. And hopefully, this graph really, you know, impresses upon you the idea that we still are in a drought, a very severe drought. So with that, you know, this is a graphic that shows you Lake Mead. And you can see over the periods of 2000, 2021, 2022, significant declines in water levels in Lake Mead. So with that, what do we do? That's where the califragilistic kicks in. And so, making sure that we all are using water as wisely as we can and really leaning in closely into conservation. So, with that being said, here in the calendar year 2022, as an entire water district for West Basin, we've actually had the lowest imported water demand on record. We're down just below 100,000 acre-feet for our entire service territory. That is tremendous. And I want to applaud all of our customers for really responding to the call for conservation, doing all that we can to reduce, reuse. Some of us have actually utilized rebates to remove our lawns. Some of us have used rain barrels to capture rain when it comes and to really help us achieve what is a significant reduction in water demand for the West Basin Service Territory. So with that, our per capita use has increased by more than, I'm sorry, it's decreased by more than forty percent since 1990. And so, when you think about that, the West Basin Service Territory population has grown, but we're using pretty much the same amount of water today as we did in 1990. Actually, we're using less water, even though we're a growing population. And so, that again, is to the credit of all of our constituents within the service territory. And here in Longdale, when you look at this particular chart, now that's a very busy chart, but what I'm gonna point out to you is the very relevant number here for the December 2020 period. The Longdale community and the Golden State Southwest District has reduced its water use by more than ten percent. And so, again, right here in our own backyard, here in Longdale, our customers have done a fantastic job, and that's to be applauded. Okay. Now, this is a graph of our actual water use across the entire service territory. And so, I mentioned from 1990 till now, we've reduced by about forty percent. So you can see that graphically here, you know, we were up around 200,000 acre-feet of water. Today, we're trending more towards 125,000 acre-feet. So, a significant decrease from that time till now. And we're still dropping. So, fantastic achievement. How are we able to do this? It's because we are messaging conservation as much as we can. So, we're asking, the state has implemented targets for all communities to reduce their water use by fifteen percent from the 2020 levels. And we're happy to say that we're on, making very good progress within the district. The state has also enacted restrictions that we all should be observing, such as not watering down our sidewalks, not overwatering our lawns, and even reducing the number of days that we actually irrigate. So, all of these measures are conducive towards conservation. Now, here in the city government, in the city, you know, in the municipal family, we could also lead by example. And so, that means discontinuing watering of what we call ornamental turf. So that would be any of the expansive lawns that we have, they're not used for recreation. Let's look at replacing those with drought-friendly landscaping. And so, again, leading by example to help us really reduce and conserve water. Okay, I'm gonna go to some of the programs that we have. And so, specifically helping our municipals lead by example, we have our public agency grass replacement program. And so, under that, we have rebates, starting at four dollars per square foot, which provides a tremendous resource for our municipals to deal with expansive lawns and to reduce our water demand for the city government. So, a great opportunity for us to partner and to get those resources into the city's hands to help us reduce and conserve. We also have the same type of incentive for our residential and commercial customers. And so, those are at three dollars per square foot. And I can tell you that the response to these programs over the past year has been tremendous. So with that said, there's considerable resources from the West Basin Municipal Water District, the Metropolitan Water District, and the SoCal Water Smart. So, these are all areas where we can share that information through the city family, out to the customers here in Longdale. So with that, I think I'm coming to the close of my presentation. We also have water education, and that takes me to the end. There we go. I'm happy to take any questions you may have for me.
Okay. First of all, thank you for that report. We definitely appreciate all the efforts of the West Basin Water District under the direction of, of course, Director Dear. So, you know, it's really encouraging to see the conservation is really working. You know, I can remember about, maybe about twenty years ago, I was working in the legislature. And back in those days, we were putting, I was on an advisory committee with West Basin. We're talking about conservation. And it was always kind of an iffy thing as to whether or not conservation really worked or what have you.
Right.
Not just with West Basin, but in particular, in general, I should say. But this is really encouraging to show that the messaging has really worked as far as conservation is concerned. It was that whole issue about whether or not we should have desal or more conservation. You know, there was always a fight, an argument, which one is better. And I see that conservation is really the way to go.
Oh, yeah.
Something that we can control as well. So, I want to thank you and the staff for all the hard work in getting that messaging out. Of course, you say was to be applauded from the public, you know, because it's the public that bought into the conservation message. So, it is really to be applauded from our residents and all the stakeholders who use water and conserve water. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for that, Mayor Pullen. I really appreciate those comments. And if I can emphasize what you're saying, imagine if we were still using 200,000 acre-feet today. That means that we would be having to make up that difference in terms of water supply to our customers. And where is that water gonna come from? We saw what's happening with the Colorado River, right? You know, Lake Mead. And I didn't have any pictures of Lake Powell, but same thing. Water levels dropping precipitously. The California Aqueduct was in the same situation before we had these atmospheric rivers. And it was so dire that the Metropolitan Water District designated certain areas of the Southern California as state water project dependent areas. These are areas that had only access to the California Aqueduct and no access to the Colorado River. And they had to go under severe conservation measures. And so, you heard about maybe, you know, flow restrictors being installed, one-day-a-week watering mandates, because the situation was that dire. We're fortunate in that we have access to the Colorado River Aqueduct, so we were not placed under those same severe conditions. But imagine what it would be if we were not conserving. The demand on the Colorado River would be tremendously higher. Fortunately, our customers are responding. And not just our customers, but the entire customers of the Southern California. So, definitely to be applauded.
Any questions?
I have two questions for the young man.
Yes, sir.
Are there any plans in the future with all the water families of developing and building more catch basins?
So, that's a really good question, because I think what you're getting at is, with all of this rain, a lot of that is getting right into our storm drains. And where does that water go? Right out to the ocean. So, it's a huge opportunity for us to develop storm water capture systems so that we can capture it, harness it as a water supply. And so, I think that there are communities who are developing stormwater initiatives. We actually helped the city of Culver City with some metropolitan funding to do a stormwater reuse project, where they put in an underground cistern underneath their street medians, and they're capturing that runoff, reusing that runoff for irrigation purposes, in addition to also cleaning up the discharges that go to the Santa Monica Bay. Now, the question that you're asking probably implies a bigger-scale solution is necessary so we could capture stormwater on large scale. And I think when we think about the Metropolitan Water District, whose jurisdiction crosses the entire Southern California region from Ventura County to the Mexican border, they can certainly pull together resources across our municipal jurisdictions to pull off the kind of scale that I think your question is contemplating. So, we need to do more in terms of stormwater capture, getting that water into our groundwater basins, so that way it can fill up our groundwater basins when we have the water, catch it when it comes. And then, when we don't have it, we could take that water out of the ground, pump it, and consume it as a part of our water supply in the dry years. So I think Metropolitan Water District is positioned to do those kind of grand-scale projects that your question contemplates.
Okay. Then my second question is even a bigger picture. What about a water pipeline? Councilwoman Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman and I were in Sacramento, and we saw the devastation the storms brought them. And the water was just raining off to nowhere, to the ocean. Why, we can build a darn gas line from Alaska to here. Why can't we build a water line from Central Cali, Northern California, down to Central, Southern California?
You know, that might be a very interesting concept. And I could only imagine what our Northern California neighbors might say if we were to build another pipeline and conveyance of water from north to south. And I certainly don't want to suppose that those kind of water solutions aren't welcome, but I could imagine the kind of concerns that might be raised by the Central Valley communities, as well as the Northern California communities, if Southern California is looking to bring more runoff and water from north to south.
Well, I think Northern California would have loved it if you could have had a pipeline.
Yeah. I mean, I think the one solution that I think many of us in Southern California are advocating for is to put additional capacity to bring water from the San Joaquin Delta, through the Bay Delta, and into the California Aqueduct.
Yeah.
And even that, you know, from an environmental clearance standpoint, has been decades in the making. And so, contemplating another, yet another pipeline project to bring more water south, I think it would be a very challenging endeavor. Let me just say it, say it that way. Now, what we are doing is, regionally, we're looking to utilize every drop of recycled water. So, one thing that West Basin is a part of is, we have a water recycling facility in El Segundo. Perhaps you're familiar with it. It's the Edward C. Little Water Recycling Facility. And it's a partnership with the city of Los Angeles, creating, I think we've created somewhere in the area of 200 to 300 billion gallons of recycled water. And we're using that for non-drinking water purposes, such as irrigation, such as cooling towers and other industrial purposes, and then to service our refineries who use the water in their fuel production, petroleum production. And so, we want to do more of that, because not every drop of recycled water currently is being used. There's still a lot of recycled water going to the ocean. So Metropolitan is looking at using every drop at the Carson Pollution Control Facility. And we are looking to partner with the city of Los Angeles in using every drop out of the Hyperion facility that is located next to LAX. So, those are the low-hanging fruit. Once we've accomplished that, then maybe we could start looking at solutions that are a bit more ambitious, the ones like you're describing.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I thought maybe you was gonna start working on it tonight. You seem pretty ambitious to me. All right. Any other questions? We thank you for that report, and congratulations on your position coming up with a year.
Thank you so much. And today's my first day being with you here at the city of Longdale, and I hope it isn't my last. I'm glad to be with you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And once again, thank you, uh, Director, um, Dear for being here tonight as well. Thank you.
All right, take care now.
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, let's hear our, from our, uh, we're on Public Safety, Item D. Let's hear from, um, the Sheriff Department. Let's have a public safety, uh, report. Let's hear from our.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, city council members. I'm here tonight to present the public safety meeting for February twenty-second through today's March sixth. Uh, Deputy Hovonisian conducted a traffic stop for vehicle code violations near the intersection of one hundred and fifty-ninth Street and Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Lawndale. Deputy Ho- Hovonisian observed in plain view an al- open alcohol container in the vehicle and, uh, with, with his contact with the driver. During a subsequent and lawful search, he discovered an illegally possessed firearm and took the driver to jail. The driver was booked at South LA Station and was not a Lawndale resident. Uh, deputies assigned in the Lawndale Service Center responded to approximately two hundred and ninety calls for service during the reporting period. The deputies made thirteen arrests for narcotics, in which two included possession for the purpose of sales. The deputies conducted approximately a hundred and twenty-five traffic enforcement stops. Over forty citations were issued during this period for violations which included modified exhaust, failure to stop at a stop sign, and tinted windows. And this concludes my report for tonight, and I would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Report?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for the report. Now let's hear from our Fire Department, LA County Fire Department. Battalion Chief Mike Lewis.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide for you a summary of our service for February, uh, here in Lawndale. We, uh, had a decrease in our, uh, response to the public with two hundred and nineteen responses. And of that, we had a, even a smaller decrease in our rescue and emergency medical response down in the seventy percent range at about a hundred and forty-nine responses. We did see a little bit of an uptick in other risks that I haven't presented to you in the past, but we think that's due to the weather change with a lot of power lines and electrical response locally in the community, and also some broken water mains, uh, both in the streets and, um, in people's homes, probably due to the change in weather more than anything else. A little bit of an uptick in fires, outdoor fires, our warming fires, with, uh, some of our, uh, people experiencing homelessness and, uh, a few structural fires as well. Uh, that's really all that we have. If there's any questions that your council has, we'd be happy to answer.
Okay, any, any questions of the LA County Fire Department?
Okay, thank you, council.
Thank you, sir, for the report. Now we are on Item E, this oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the calendar, on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you will, start with your name. In about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called, just as soon as the person before you is finished, you can. If, if you will, if you stand in the queue, we'll, we'll definitely appreciate that. You wanna speak, right? Okay, yes, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Michelle Pina from Lawndale Library. Um, I just have a couple announcements. Um, this Wednesday, we'd like to invite the youth in the community to join us as former artist, um, to the animated TV show The Simpsons. Carlos Nieto teaches how to create and modify any anime, um, characters from scratch. Also, Thursday, March ninth, the library will be closed due to, um, all the, the staff will be, um, attending Staff Development Day, so the library will be closed all day. Um, also, I would like to thank Mr. Reyes. I know last, uh, meeting, um, the subject or the, the help that he's been providing with the homeless, um, has been very helpful, at least for the library. Every time we've needed assistance, he's always, um, been there to help, and he comes right away and assists us with that. So I hope that if you guys are able to get more staff for that, I, it would be a great help, um, definitely. So thank you for that. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Homelessness, crime, and especially the metro cutting through Lawndale are some of the big issues residents of the city bring up in next door. Raising chickens in the city does not seem to be a burning issue, yet at the last city council meeting, more time was spent on that agenda item, perhaps allowing chickens in residential areas than the city's mid-year budget review. This item was originally brought up as a council member had concerns from a resident about the cost of eggs and perhaps raising chickens would be a cheaper alternative. However, the cost of building chicken coops and cleaning up after the chickens would not be a sound investment of someone's time and money. While most hands laid only about an egg a day, the cost of feeding them further outweighs any savings on egg cost. If chickens are allowed in Lawndale, who would monitor them for the diseases they spread with outbreaks of salmonella among some backyard chicken keepers? With already limited resources and time, community development staff spent considerable time researching and providing a detailed staff report on the history of chickens in Lawndale's residential areas. Is additional research on this matter the best use of staff's time? Fortunately, at the last council meeting, the proposal to spend two hundred thousand dollars for a statue of a current sports figure to be built at Los Angeles High School was pulled from the agenda. If the city has two hundred thousand, it needs to spend. How about the license plate readers that were successful in quickly identifying shooters at a recent Hermosa Beach drive-by? Two hundred thousand could go a long way for increased law enforcement, additional staffing, and even salary increases for city employees. After the February sixth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting, I mailed the mayor and city council detailed reasons why the Lawndale Little League failed the audit miserably and why it was a mistake to give them the opportunity to apply again for fireworks booth permit this year. Out of thirty-two thousand dollars expenditures claimed on the recent financial reporting, only fourteen ninety-two was spent from the July twenty-twenty-two fireworks sales. All the other funds were spent before the fireworks stands the last year were even open. Although it is appreciated that the city council finally did the right thing and enforced the municipal code against the others that failed the audit, it is clear that this was a mistake to give the Little League a pass simply because some of the council members liked this particular organization. There was no way the Little League could have clarified the audit results since they were not even close to spending the required amounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Ray Holler.
We're ready when you are.
Okay, I'm Ray Holler, homeowner in southwest Lawndale for thirty-six years. Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm, uh, going to talk again, once again, about, about the metro, green line, extension proposals, a draft environmental impact report. I'm going to raise an issue about which I'm confident you, confident you will address, but I will bring a bit of specmanship to you, that topic being environmental justice. I keep trying to relate issues of concern to the project goals stated in the DEIR, and I've noticed that in the previous report about this project, the Supplemental Alternatives Analysis of two thousand eighteen, some concepts our data did not get transferred to the DEIR. In SAA, Table two point seven, Project Purpose Goals and Objectives, Item Five, is the goal to ensure equity with the objective to provide benefits to transit-dependent and minority populations with the evaluation criterion being environmental justice. I'm sure we agree that environmental justice is an issue of great concern to Lawndale, but somehow this concept was dropped, uh, appears to have been dropped from the DEIR. In the one thousand eight-page DEIR, the words environmental justice appear only once, and I do not see anywhere where it is evaluated. Uh, I hope this bit of specmanship is useful to you. Thank you for your service every day.
Thank you. Okay, are there any others wishing to speak to this body, oral communications? See, now we will close oral communications, bring it up to the dials for any discussion by the council. Let's talk to Hoffman-Gorman.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that spoke. Um, Michelle, thank you for keeping us posted on what's going on over at the library. We appreciate hearing all the fun things that are occurring. Um, Randall. I agree, the city is working. I'm gonna take just one piece of what you, you talked about. One of them was the intersection, um, cameras. I also am very interested in moving forward in those intersection cam- cameras, and I know that staff is looking into that currently, so keep your fingers crossed. Let's get this thing done. Ray, thank you for that information. I have not caught, but I have not, uh, looked at word count to see that. So I appreciate that information from you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Kearney.
I have nothing wanted to say at all.
Okay, thank you. Councilor.
So I just wanna thank everybody that came out and spoke. You know, we appreciate all of your comments, um, and for you taking the time to come out here. It's important to hear from the residents. Um, so I will touch on, um, one thing, uh, the metro. I was hoping maybe, because this is a discussion that keeps coming up, if our staff, if our city manager, Sean, can you, um, maybe just for the audience, give a little description of environmental justice and what that component would mean and what, um, metro has. I believe they've commented on that component, um, a bit, so maybe a little background history. I think that might be helpful for the residents.
Staff still, we're, uh, thank you, Mayor and council, the staff. We're still looking at the draft DEIR. It's out for, you know, sixty days. Um, we're looking at all the aspects and all of the requirements. Environmental justice, I have to look again, but I think when they did the supplemental assessment analysis, that was when they were doing a joint document, an EIS, Environmental Impact Statement, under NEPA, and then the EIR under, uh, California Environmental Quality Act. I'd have to look on the, what, uh, Ms. Holler brought, Mr. Holler brought up, but we'll go back and look at that section and just verify, uh, what, what the difference is and why it was not included. Uh, there's differences between NEPA and SEQA, as the council is aware, and the, and some of the residents that are familiar with them. And sometimes the environmental justice is mandated in NEPA. I mean, it's been a while since I've looked at the guidelines. But SEQA, it's, then it's, you know, that's a goal, but it may not be one of the checklist, on the checklist, environmental justice. But it is certainly part of one of the environmental, we'll go back and verify. And I know, uh, Mr. Holler's right, that they were originally doing a joint document, which they've since dropped the NEPA side of that document. But we'll still go back and double check, be happy to hear. I'm glad, we're getting lots of emails from people and ideas as we're reviewing the documents, and we're incorporating, verifying those ideas, and incorporating this would be one of them that I've written down and we'll go back and verify.
Okay, thank you. And one last, it takes a village, so we really appreciate all of you looking into it and helping us out as well. And I'll pass it along.
Madam Protiem, please.
Um, Rhonda said most of the items that I was gonna speak on. I just wanna thank everybody for coming out and speaking. And if you didn't speak, just attending these meetings are, are great to see new faces. Thank you.
Absolutely. I also wanna say that Rhonda said most of it as well, but I do wanna. But I do wanna thank everyone who came out tonight to express, um, their views and to share their views with us, and we definitely will look into, um, these items, and particularly the, the metro. We'll continue to oppose metro in this project. With that, we will continue our agenda with Item G, which is the Consent Calendar. Items from two through eight.
Mr. Mayor, before you continue and take an action, I, uh, we received, the city received comments from our utilities companies. I talked to the city attorney's office, and I just want the, uh, on item number, under the consent, it's Item Six. We wanted to make it clear to the utilities companies, Edison, as well as Southern California Gas, that this ordinance is not towards them, it exempts utilities. And then we'll be happy to go back after we move forward with this. And when we do some updates to our ordinances, we can, uh, add some additional language they've requested.
Yeah.
But I just want to assure the utilities, Victor, we work with them all the time. Edison, they called me a couple times, that thi- this ordinance exempts, it's exempt under the law already, is existing statute. This is for outside agencies and outside entities, not public utilities.
Right, so just to clarify and, and add to that, um, any entity with a franchise agreement, that franchise agreement is a contract that grants certain rights, and the ordinance does not get in the way of that. So, um, legally speaking, uh, everything will remain for those franchisees exactly the way that it has. But, uh, because they've asked, um, we will come back with, with a modification. Um, but as the city manager said, that modification will come when we're doing some other cleanup. Uh, going forward, if I, if any franchisee has a, a project of, of ten million dollars or greater within the city of Lawndale, uh, they'll be treated as a franchisee under their contract. So hopefully that makes it clear for you and for the public as well. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor, it's item number five, my mistake.
Yeah, yeah, item five. Yeah, thank you for that, that clarification on that, and that is item number five, okay. Okay. But with that being the case, with item number five and item number six, or second readings, um, so before we adopt the consent calendar, if it is a pleasure of this body, I'm gonna ask the city attorney, you gonna read, read that again for a second reading, or five and six?
Sure, read, read the title, sir, no problem. Uh, Item Five is an ordn- is Ordinance Number eleven ninety-seven dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lawndale, California, amending Chapter twelve point oh-eight of Title Twelve of the Lawndale Municipal Code, establishing encroachment permits for major improvement projects. Item Six is Ordinance Number eleven ninety-six dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lawndale, California, amending the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan to remove car wash uses within the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan and a finding of categorical exemption from SEQA. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, it actually kinda put the, the court before the horse, because I probably should have obtained a motion first, and then once the motion was on the, on the table, you read, read that.
Okay, so moved.
So let's obtain a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay, this motion's been made to adopt the consent, the consent calendar by Kearney. And Quavis has seconded the, uh, the motion, and both items, five and six, has already been read by the city attorney. Uh, would the council please vote on the consent calendar?
For the consent calendar, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. This next item is a public hearing. Appeal of notice of abatement for a property located at forty-seven zero-two West one hundred and sixty-fifth Street. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. Uh, the staff report you have before you is in regards to an appeal for the abatement of a property located at forty-seven oh-two one sixty-fifth Street. Um, the code case was started in September of two thousand twenty-one after a complaint came in from a resident regarding the height of hedges at this property. Um, per our protocols, Officer Greg Williams went out, did an inspection, confirmed that the heights of hedges were too tall, notified the property owner, and advised them they needed to cut the hedges to the legal height. Um, after several more notices and eventually citations, this case was eventually turned over to our city's attorney's office for criminal prosecution. Over the course of the last year and a half, the property owner has challenged the city's findings, stating the reasons as to why she felt the hedges were legal, including making references to original structural plans. Um, she was contacted by me on two separate occasions via email, explaining the structural, the plans that were submitted were actually structural plans only, and were no approvals for landscaping. Additionally, we did reach out to her and let her know that, uh, citations would be forthcoming if she didn't solve these, uh, violations. Uh, I would like to also add that the resident that created this, uh, complaint calls me regularly to find out what the status of this is, and she's concerned about her own safety because of the heights create a dangerous element for her, she feels. Um, this is a very simple case with a very simple solution. Uh, the property owner is not required to pull any permits. There are no plans that need to be subjected or sent to the city, and there is no cost associated with this, uh, that would be, have to be paid to the city. It is unfortunate this code, this case has taken this long to crack, uh, but the municipal code clearly states that the heights of the hedges are beyond what they're allowed. And I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions before we open the public hearing, which is an appeal, um, hearing? Okay, with that being the case, it is now seven twenty-five. The public hearing is now open. Is there any wishing to provide any comments or testimony in this hearing? May do so at this time. If you will come to the podium, if you will start with your, your name, and, and then you can provide your comments.
Hi, uh, I'm Oliver Smith, the owner of the property.
Put that up for me, if you will, the, the mic up for me, and, sorry.
Is, is that better? There we go. Uh, I'm Oliver Smith, the owner of four-seven oh-two. Um, we are. Is that better? There we go. I'm Oliver Smith, the owner of four seven oh two. We moved into the house in February of two thousand nineteen, we purchased it in August of two thousand nineteen, and then in November of two thousand nineteen, we received the initial complaint. At the time, our hedges were lower than those of our neighbors across the alleyway, and communicating with those neighbors, we found that the original version of the complaint was initiated in two thousand and six. I have a copy of some paperwork from attorneys for our neighbors, who were, we thought we had the original plot plans and so on, but demonstrating that in two thousand and six, there was litigation being carried out, attempting to claim that the hedge is the front hedge and applies to the front hedge rules. The property is on an alleyway, a private driveway, and the front of the house is in fact on the driveway facing the adjacent four seven oh six, not facing the front of the house. The doors facing the street are in fact just a French patio doors, and when we purchased the house, part of our understanding was that that is a side yard, and that the fence was a privacy fence so that we would have some seclusion from that. We also had a, provided a recording from the now passed Chris Wilson, advising the previous owner, that all that was required was to make a six inch gap between the hedges to satisfy the city, which we complied with. And in some of our communications with the city, we had been told that would be sufficient, so we had enacted that. But then we later found that that hadn't been sufficient, and we were not aware, so we were told we were being charged a fine, which we paid immediately, attempted to communicate further with the city, thought that we had resolved it by getting the hedges trimmed a little bit, but again, I noticed on the way here tonight, that our hedges are again, not as tall as those of our neighbor, they're at least a two or three inches taller, and the neighbor who has filed the complaint, we regularly find sort of attempting to peer in our, from our side window where the living room is, over those hedges. So, I just wanted to provide that additional insight. Wendy, Inspector did come to visit the house, he tried to deliver the last notice to our side door by entering the garden gate, and my wife informing him, no, this is the side of the house, the front is just down here, he just pinned the notice to the side gate, so that's our, I don't know if you have any questions on that as well.
Okay, so you said, let me make sure I'm clear, so you're saying this fence is on, not the fence, but the hedges are on the side, is not the front?
They are facing the street, but that is the side of the house, and that paperwork I had here is that confirming from the original designers that that was the expectation, is that the house is oriented sideways to the street, onto the private alleyway, and that this is in fact the back or side yard, and that is a, supposed to be a privacy fence. Our main living room, you know, where we sit in our pajamas, is effectively facing the street if those hedges are taken down. And because of this ongoing thing, we've been a little afraid to know what to do with that, the hedges don't look good at the minute, and the fence is decaying, we'd like to resolve those things one way or the other, and find out, is this actually something where we can have privacy there, or, you know, is that house not gonna work out the way we thought it would?
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna provide any comments on this?
Aside the hedge issue, this is a rather unusual case.
Why don't you give us your name and stuff for the record?
Rado Abraham.
Thank you.
The, Jonathan Stein built six condominium complexes in Longdale in eighty-nine to ninety-one or so. The, this is the second one that's been involved with the city council, the other one was at the cul-de-sac on one hundred seventy-first Street, and if you remember, that one, because they complained of the same issues, were allowed to build a five-foot fence. Now, this property is four units, and there's a case against forty-seven oh two, the other front unit is just as bad, if not worse. Now, this is a condo complex, and what, the way Jonathan Stein developed these complexes was that you only owned the house that you live in, the rest of it is common area that's owned by the condominium in, you know, every owner owns, in this case, one-fourth of the property, but the fences theoretically belong to the HOA. So, if, I guess I'm confused too, if someone was concerned about forty-seven oh two, why weren't they concerned about the other one? Because it's just as, just as bad. So, anyway, that's a little background on these properties, thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else wishing to provide any comments, testimony in this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna, it's closed, the public hearing now, it's seven thirty-one, no, seven thirty-two, the public hearing is closed, I'm gonna bring it up to the justices for some discussion on this matter. I do have one question, but some, you got a question? Why don't you go ahead with your question, start with yours first.
When the original plans were turned in for review, which side was the main entrance? Was it on facing the street, or was it on the driveway? Also, refresh my mind how high the hedges could be.
Counsel, Mayor and Council, I'll answer that question. The narrowest width of the lot is defined as the front of that property, doesn't matter which way, the orientation of the house. It's, this has been an ongoing case since two thousand and six, I know it's a new property owner, but this has gone on for many, many years with the hedges, and I believe, Jarrett, you can answer the solid, they can only have thirty inches solid, right? If it's a light fence?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, when a fence or a hedge is solid, it can only be up to thirty inches. Hedges cannot be see-through, only fences, and so if you have a fence, you can have it up to forty-eight inches if it's see-through, however, a hedge, a hedge can only be thirty inches. Thank you.
But if your main, my question was, your main door, is it?
Your, the, it doesn't matter the orientation of your door, as their code defines, this is a tentative, this was a tentative parcel map for condominium purposes, I looked at this myself two years ago, under the previous city manager, and the, these were developed as individual units, they do, Mr. Abraham is correct, it was an HOA, but the HOA is not active, so each parcel's treated separately, and I looked, I pulled the old case file on this one two years ago, and went through it with Michael, as well as Jarrett, myself, and the old city manager, so we have all the, all the development standards. There was no approval for the hedges, or the landscaping, those are usually separate approvals, so. But all this is, as Mr. Reyes has pointed out, is just a simple clipping them down. So, the narrowest width of the lot is considered the front. And then, as Mr. even brought up, the separate issue the council decided three years ago, was any lots without a sidewalk on a cul-de-sac next to the railroad tracks would be allowed to have higher fencing, or solid fences. So, this is off Condon, I believe off Condon, and it's facing, and it's not on a cul-de-sac, it's on the end street, that Condon in the terminus of the street, right in the corner, the southwest corner.
Right. So, you've answered my question. Any other questions?
I have one question. For Sean, why wasn't the house, like Rado said, next to upside the two?
As the council policy is, we know the policy, I guess, they, over the years, I wasn't part of the code case, Michael can answer it, but they cut the hedges, they trimmed them back, they met and complied, I guess the new owners took it over, and maybe when they transferred the property, they fully explained the issues, and they grew up. If you go through this Google search, you'll see over the years, they trim them, they shut them, they cut them down, they grow. They're nice hedges, but unfortunately, they're just not compliant, so all they get, all they would need to do is just trim them back down. And there's no permit, as Michael's mentioned, no cost from the city, they just can go do it.
My only comment is, in twenty eighteen, prior to this owner, we demonstrated that the city was behind keeping them at thirty inches because the previous owner did have to cut them back in twenty eighteen by their own list.
I guess my question would be, you know, hearing from the homeowner, it sounds like there is not unopposed to trimming them, and if I'm thinking correctly, is this a pill for us to provide an exception? If not, it goes to the next step of involving legal? Because that sounds a little bit, I mean...
Michael, do you wanna answer that for the council, please?
The next step would be to address this criminally. As I said, this is a very simple matter, in terms of why none of the other properties were addressed, that they were not complained against, I mean, there are a number of houses that have six-foot hedges in town, we see them daily, but because no complaints were lodged, we don't enact any enforcement against them. The next step would be criminal prosecution, though.
Also, another question. If the homeowner chose to, even without ordinance the way it is, they could change that type of door, correct, on the structure, and go through a permitting process?
Yeah, that would be, as Jarrett pointed out a couple months, weeks ago, that would just be a building permit, come in and change out the doors. Would be no site plan, they could, if they want to switch them out. It's totally up to them. Who would be opposed to that? Just a building permit, you know, just change out the door.
Yeah, which is totally separate from the hedges, right?
One more question for you.
Yes, we would, we would work with that.
For whomever. When did you take over the property?
Uh, we talked today, uh, we, oh, this twenty-nine.
Because if you look at your package, this address has been signed at three different times, so if you think you got signed the first time, you'd take care of the hedges, you'd have went for a second and third ticket to be given before you appealed, you should have appealed the first one. I think, personally, I think he had ample time to take care of this property, and he didn't. That's just my personal opinion.
I will share with the council, as the council may be aware of this case, the previous property owner went through years of back and forth, and perhaps the benefit of the doubt for the property owner, they may have not shared all of those issues with those hedges, because they are a nice set of hedges, that screen, and, so, just so you know, I know they've been cited, but this, they, they didn't initiate, this case started way back in two thousand and six, over the years, so, we don't know what was said to them, but yeah, they are the new property owners apparently, and they've had time to correct it.
Because the second ticket was issued, one six twenty-two, and the latest one was two twenty-three twenty-two, so, that's my opinion.
How much does this cost us to take it to criminal court, and is there a recovery of the fees? I guess that's my question. I mean, to me, it's, it's a little excessive for hedges, in my opinion, but, you know, I know, I understand that's what our code is, but I'm just wondering, you know, how much this costs us?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you. Unfortunately, it's working up a complaint, most of which is based on what's already in front of you tonight, and then, as the council members may know, it depends on the defendant's willingness to reach code compliance. Sometimes these cases stretch out and stretch out, we always hope they don't. The purpose of filing a criminal case is not to adjudge someone a criminal, but it's to use that as motivation to have them reach compliance. We would certainly hope that tonight's action, if the council decides to go with staff's recommendation, will result in the property owner bringing the hedges into compliance, and so that no further action will be taken. I would love to have this matter not come to my office, believe me.
And just a reminder, Mayor and Council, this is the process, administrative citing, that was an alternative to the criminal, going straight to the criminal, but, you know, as Mr. Murphy's pointed out, this may end up, hopefully we don't have to, this resolves it and gets it down the road, and we don't have to deal with it again.
I would just like to remind everyone in the room here, that the reason that this ordinance is in the place where it is right now, with short in the front, is a lot has to do with it, it's about a safety issue. It's a safety issue when it comes time for a sheriff's deputy or a fire truck to come down the street and do a nine-one-one call or anything like that. The people that sat at this desk prior to us, that have made those ordinances, I think they did us a grand favor, and yes, I also drive down the streets, and I see many that are tall, but it still doesn't make it right. Our ordinance states it's thirty and forty-eight inches, and it's that way for a reason, and especially in this day and age where our parking is such an issue, it becomes even more important that the people that are there to rescue and keep us safe have access and can see what's going on on that property. Thank you.
And just to add a little bit, it was my understanding, when we spoke about the hedges, that it has to do with the cars also, driving in and out of the accessway, and I don't necessarily know, though, that the thirty inches and the forty-eight inches are sta, I don't know if those are standard, or who came up with those numbers, in terms of the height, I don't know if other cities had them, or we were just, you know, what we came from. What I understand, it was brought up by a staff member who brought up heights with regards to some of this stuff, a former employee, and I think it was out of caution, but I, you know, I'm not always of the belief that because, you know, it could happen, doesn't mean that it's likely to happen. I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not necessarily sure I agree on the heights of what we have in our codes, just because I didn't, I wasn't here when those were implemented, you know, I personally would probably like to look at this ordinance on my own and kind of see, you know, what the debate behind it was with regards to coming up with those measurements.
If I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, those have been on the books since the early nineteen seventies.
Well, I was gonna say, they have been on for a few decades, I believe, and safety is part of it, and not just for firefighters and emergency responders, but also for just individuals backing out of their own driveways or pulling into their driveways. If they can't see beyond the neighbor's hedges, they can get into accident, or they could hit pedestrians, so safety is a part of the reason the hedge height is the way it is.
Mayor, Council, the comprehensive fence update happened in the two thousand, like fourteen, that was one of you guys really did, a really, our longest ordinance that, you know, on the fencing, that's when it was looked at. And clear sight is one of the big things. This property has common shared driveway, so when people back in and out, they need that clear sight, as mentioned.
So, one more question for you, Michael, Sean, if we deny his appeal, the abatement goes forward, he cleans up his yard, do these, this eight hundred and fifty dollars in fines disappear, or is he still on top of the abatement?
The purpose of the citations is to get compliance, I have no problem avoiding the tickets if the work gets done.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? Okay, so what is the pleasure of this body concerning this appeal? Concerning the recommendation, the staff recommendation?
Well, then I'll make a motion to do with the staff recommendation. If the young man can bring it up to standards, and we can waive the eight hundred and fifty dollars in fees, that'll satisfy the hedge.
I'll second it.
So, the motion is made by Kearney that we uphold the staff recommendation, uphold the violations against the property owner, in terms of the abatement, and the director has suggested that he waive the fees if he can get compliance, seconded by Hoffman Gorman. Gorman, any discussion?
I just wanna say that my vote is reflective of what our policies are, and, you know, to be fair, this is what every resident would have to go through, so that's, you know, at this one, I think we have to follow what our codes are. I may not agree with the codes, but, you know, need to follow what they are outlined as.
With that being the case, would the council please vote?
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you for that. Next item, item ten, Alondra Park Multi-Benefit Storm Drain Capture Project Partnership.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Adam Sari, interim Public Works Director, city engineer. Item before you has to do with Alondra Park Multi-Benefit Storm Water Capture Project. I'm not sure how Um, I'm not, uh, sure how much council knows about the background, so if I'm saying too much, please stop me. But basically, uh, this has to do with the Dominguez Channel Watershed Management Group, which, um, includes nine agencies in addition to LA County, County Flood Control, City of Los Angeles, um, Carson, El Segundo, Hawthorne, uh, Inglewood, um, Lomita, as well as our beautiful city, City of Longdale. So there are nine agencies there. Um, Alondra Park, as you know, it's just outside of Longdale. It's a, it's a big park, um, or big site, um, uh, east of Prairie, north of Redondo Beach Boulevard, and south of Manhattan Beach Boulevard. So basically to respond to the water quality, um, and MPD, yes, and MS four requirements, um, LA County, um, as well as the agencies involved in this, uh, management group, um, applied for, uh, funds. Uh, they were able to secure sixty million plus, uh, dollars, uh, for this project. Um, and, um, uh, through a, a partnership agreement of all the agencies, uh, this project will, uh, have the objectives of capturing forty acre foot volume of storm water by diversion structures, which is basically controlling the flow and, you know, making the BMPs and the compliance more, um, appropriate and in compliance with the requirements. And, uh, the project will also have recreational opportunities, uh, soccer fields and sports fields and so forth. Manhattan Beach and Redondo Beach, uh, even though they're part of Beach Cities Watershed Group, because they have tributary area to this, uh, park, uh, they're also part of the partnership program. So basically, in a nutshell, uh, staff recommendation is that the city council tonight authorizes the city manager to, um, execute this partnership agreement and, you know, be a part of the, the management group. And, uh, it has no fiscal impact to the City of Longdale. It's all good. That concludes my staff report.
Very good. Thank you for that staff report. Are there any questions on the staff report? Okay, with that being the case, I think we can take, can we take this, um, on just unanimous consent with the city attorney? Do we need a vote on this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, since it is an agreement with other government agencies, I'd like a vote. Thank you, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, what is the pleasure of the body concerning item, item ten, this agreement?
I'll make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation.
Okay, so the motion's been, been made by. As far as that we, uh, adopt the staff recommendation, uh, to enter into the agreement. And seconded by, uh, Mr. Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Would the council please vote?
For item number ten, the motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item eleven, award of, of the hurled, let me read this again, award of the hurly Hoffman Community Center HVAC Assessment Professional Service Agreement.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Uh, this item is also, uh, Public Works. I'll be presenting this on behalf of myself as well as Mike Estes, uh, Director of Community Services. Um, council probably doesn't need any background on the HVAC in the community center, Hoffman Community Center across the street. Um, my understanding is that the project got completed, um, eleven years ago, uh, and open to public. Um, ever since that time, uh, the HVAC, you know, both in the hot seasons and cold seasons have been acting up. Uh, you know, whether it's shut down or malfunctions, uh, basically the city for quite some time has had maintenance contractors, you know, take a look, you know, do some repairs here and there, you know. But, uh, you know, what we have concluded is that none of those maintenance contractors are really mechanical engineers to the, to the extent that they could, um, diagnose, you know, what the problem is. Uh, you know, whether i- i- it should be full replacement or components thereof or distribution, uh, systems, um, and so forth. So, um, I've had, uh, long discussions and debates, you know, with the city manager, with the staff. And, uh, you know, we came to the conclusion that, uh, quite honestly, there is a step missing here. You know, we can't, even if, even if we wish to replace the HVAC system, you know, there is not, um, in-house expertise, you know, to be able to spec, you know, what the new system is going to be. So on a pro bono basis, you know, we spoke with, um, HVAC mechanical engineer, um, you know, to take a look at the system. They did, and you know, they gave us a huge laundry list of, you know, what needs to be done in terms of the assessment. Uh, mind you, this is not replacement, this is knowing what's going on with the system. So anyways, um, we issued, um, an RFP, um, request for professional, professional services, not a bid, but professional services on January nineteenth, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. And we received, um, three proposals, three fee proposals, including the scope on February the second, from three mechanical engineers who are experts in this, uh, in this field. Uh, IMEC Corp. of Ontario, IDS Group of Irvine, PBS Engineers of Los Angeles. Uh, they all submitted proposals, uh, good proposals and fee proposals. So after meeting with the lowest fee that was submitted by IMEC Corp. of Ontario, we found this company to be fully competent in terms of, uh, you know, being able to do the necessary assessments, um, which by the way includes load calculations, uh, reviewing the record documents and control site investigation, air, water, balance testing and, uh, you know, cost estimates for a variety of different options. So tonight, um, well, I was concerned about the fee, but when I noticed that they're all pretty close, i- i- it's a good indication that there is quite a bit of work involved in this, uh, mechanical engineering assessment of, of this unit before we make a decision of what we do, uh, with the unit, uh, whether it is repair or replacement. Uh, so tonight, uh, my recommendation to the city council is approve a professional services agreement with IMEC Corp. In the amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand, uh, to assess the HVAC at the, uh, Hoffman, uh, Community Center. And, uh, as far as the fiscal approved appropriation of fifty-three thousand from ARPA funds for this effort. Also, uh, Josh Massey of IMEC, uh, Corp. is also present tonight. You know, in case the city council has any technical questions of, you know, what, uh, is included in the scope. That concludes my staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you for the report. Uh, just a clarification, um, just, just for my sake. So the assessment of the analysis, is that analogous to you have, you have a car and you bring the car for a diagnostic before you take it to the mechanic? So the mechanic, you know, the mechanic is repairing what needs to be repaired as opposed to what they think needs to be repaired? And then you find out that it was a bigger problem or a separate problem versus what they actually repaired? Is that why you do the analysis first or something like the diagnostic?
I- if I may, that's a, that's a good example, but a better example would be, um, wanting to do streets paving, you know, without any design, you know, and advertising those street projects and getting a contractor. And the contractor comes and gives you a price, but then it says, okay, where are the plans and specifications? You know, what am I, what's the thickness of asphalt, concrete specs, you know, all that kind of stuff. So there is a, there is a step missing, and that is civil engineer designing the street, making sure that everything, all the plant specs, you know, to avoid any change orders and knowing what the scope of the contractor who comes and puts the brick and mortar into the ground. Um, so that's that missing step.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Miss, Mr. Mayor and Council, just, just to bring up, so over the years, since the day we opened the community center, we've had issues with the HVAC.
In the parts.
In the parts. And every time, just recently, you authorized us to go fix it, we went and fixed it, added another problem. So we, instead of putting out the specs like we did on the roads, we're gonna get the details, what we need. We may not need to replace it. Although I'm not a mechanical engineer, it, I looked at the roof, it looks kind of small for the size of that building. And I heard, not sure, there might have been some value engineering going on, the same cost, cause it seems kind of small for the size of that building and the area, the livable area, habitable area that has to cover. So we need to get all of this hammered down. We may not need to re, take out the system, we may be able to save it and just upgrade it without taking the whole thing out. So we need a professional to tell us what's going on instead of just recently we fixed everything and it went down again.
Okay, sounded good, thank you. Yes, Mayor.
Do we have any ballpark idea of what a new HVAC system would cost?
That's a very good question. That's a very good question. Um, Joshua, would you come to the podium and, you know, give a better guesstimate of worst case scenario? If everything needs to be replaced for a thirty-two-plus-thousand square foot of building?
Mayor, council members, thank you. Um, when I visited the site and looked at, uh, at the building, I did notice it's a LEED certified building, which is, uh, sustainably designed. Uh, my belief that maybe the system was designed maybe on the lower end to save energy. And it may have controls that are complicated to, to achieve that result. Uh, so we're gonna look into that and kind of focus on that portion, getting control of what's there. But, um, as was mentioned before, uh, we will validate the actual loads of the building from a fresh perspective as far as heat load and occupancy, ventilation, code requirements, things like that. And our hope is that the equipment is sized appropriately and that we will be able to utilize the control system in a way that, uh, makes it sort of the space for the comfort of the people that are there. As far as the cost of a new system, that could be, um, pretty expensive. We may recommend, uh, something alternative where we keep the system in place and maybe provide some supplemental temperature cooling or heating in local areas where we have problems. But I mean, that remains to be seen, we, we need to look into it. And, uh, the RFP was written well, uh, including a test and balance company. It's a subcontractor that, that we have. Uh, technicians will come in and take actual measurements of how the system's operating. So we, you know, we have our math version of what we see, energy model that is predictive based on weather data and, and, uh, physical attributes of the building. But we'll also have some real feedback of how the system operates that we can make some judgments on and recommendations.
So if you're going to say, would you say between three hundred and six hundred thousand dollars for a brand new unit?
Uh, it could be more than that. It could be a million dollars.
Because, uh, I personally believe that when they put that up, that unit was too small for that building. I think Rhonda's dad and Mary Protem, we all said the same thing, that was too small. But like you said, it was to get that LEED certified at the tech.
That's a, that's a possible reason.
It, it is a LEED certified building. And, uh, one other thing, the warrant, there's a twenty-five year warranty on those, that unit. So.
Uh, yeah, one of the challenges with replacing a unit like that with a larger, uh, unit because it's on a roof, there's structural implications to that and infrastructure implications, uh, the way the air moves through the ducts. Sometimes you can't use the same size duct, which is why my thought is maybe we retrofit something that's, uh, a supplement to that. If, if it indeed is too small.
We gotta get it done. Any other, um, questions there? Okay, so what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
I'll, I'll motion to approve, uh, the fif-
Yeah, the allocation.
The, the allocation of fifty-three thousand dollars.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made by, um, Quavis and seconded by Suarez that we approve the, uh, staff recommendation. And the allocation of the, uh, fifty-three thousand dollars for the assessment for a new, for HVAC, um, system. Was there any discussion on the motion? All right, would the council please vote?
For item number eleven, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, item twelve, credit card policy resolution.
Good evening, Mayor. This is, this item is, um, brought forward to update our current credit card policy that the city has. The current policy was adopted by resolution back in November of nineteen eighty-seven and has not been updated since then. Um, our auditors for the past three years have issued the city a, um, basically a, uh, best practices comment that the policy that we have, they don't even really, that they don't consider it to be a policy because it is very short and very vague as to a lot of things in there. Um, it's only like half a page at best. Um, so they, you know, we've had this same recommendation last three years in a row. So my staff and myself have gone through, we updated it, we have a policy I think is very, uh, robust and it will help to strengthen our internal controls, you know, both to help with non-compliance and also possible fraud if that does happen. We feel that we have a good, uh, policy written up, it's about four pages long. We also created two, uh, forms, one is a, forgot the titles, but, uh, it's basically to authorize, one is a credit card request form and one is a authorized credit card user listing. And these, you know, together will be, basically we can track who's using the card, who has a credit card and how it's being used. So, you know, it's gonna really help to strengthen the controls of the city regarding the credit card use. Um, the new policy also lists things in there like what the card can be used for, what it can't be used for. Um, we established a dollar limit on a single transaction to nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Anything above that, really, we don't want to use the card. And that all purchases still need to, uh, follow the Longdale code as well as the purchasing policy that we currently have. Um, it will also hold the cardholder responsible and will, it also lists the possible actions the city can take in the event of abuse or unauthorized transactions. And that's all I have as far as this credit card policy. If you have any questions, more than happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of this, on this item? Okay, seeing none. Okay, this is a resolution, so let's have a vote on this one. Um, since we have a resolution, we have to adopt. What is the pleasure of this? Okay, the motion's been made.
So moved.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we, um, adopt the resolution.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. You don't need to read the resolution, all right? Counsel, please vote.
For item number twelve, the motion passes unanimously.
All righty, thank you. All right, items from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be pretty quick. Um, I, I, I was, uh, at the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department City Managers Educational Seminar last Thursday. So we went over quite a bit of things. Sheriff Luna, he was there and as long as I saw, uh, you know, the Assistant Sheriff, Under Sheriff, April Tardy, she was there. She gave a big, uh, just, I'll just let everybody know, right in front of everyone in the entire room, she gave a big hug to Longdale. Cause remember, I represent Longdale, so everybody was, it was pretty good. So I, I felt good that, you know, they recognized Longdale and Sheriff Luna waved. So, uh, we were, it was, it was a pretty good meeting. I learned a lot about how the sheriffs operate, that broke us out in the commands, Longdale's in the central command. Um, Sergeant Smith was with me the whole time. Uh, it was interesting how they do, uh, we learned about homicides, how, why it so, takes so long when they do the homicide. And the homicide unit essentially located out of Monterey Park. So when they come, they're not coming from the southwest, they actually come from Monterey Park and they have to do all these things. That's why it takes so long, uh, for the, investigate the homicides and they go through the crime scene and it's pretty interesting. Um, one thing we did learn that the sheriffs con, uh, did inform us, there's gonna be an increase. I sent you an email on that, uh, we'll wait for the official letter, but there will be an increase, uh, to the contract as well as to the liability trust, but it's not as high, it's like, you know, in the one percent range. But that's, that's about it on that. Um, one other thing, uh, we're working fevi- previously on the, the draft EIR comment letter. So we're finding all kinds of things that we're gonna have ready for that letter on the one that's ready to submit. So just so everybody knows. And then Michael has a comment about. And then Michael has a comment about cleanup day.
Yes, uh, thank you, Sean. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Um, our beautification committee works very hard on planning things for the community to help beautify the city and, and to help residents get involved. Um, March eleventh through nineteenth, this is gonna be cleanup week. The spring cleanup week will be beginning. Um, there are a number of events that are happening, including, uh, unlimited residential pickup of appliances, uh, unwanted furniture and e-waste. Um, also garage sales are free between March eleventh through the nineteenth. And most importantly, volunteers are needed for Saturday, March eighteenth at nine AM for a citywide cleanup. Uh, we do have flyers at the back of the room and it has been advertised on all of our social media as well as our, uh, cable channel and our EMI sign. So, if anyone has any questions, I can answer that. But it's just, uh, I just wanna remind you that our beautification committee has planned this and they are working very hard to keep the city clean and nice. Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Are they still giving away their Wiener dogs and a Coke, French fries?
Uh, we, we're not giving away, Wiener Schnitzel is a sponsor anymore. They are giving refreshments though, so that we will have, uh, and I spoke with Liddy today, they do wanna have healthier items.
Okay.
But, but, yeah, not, not, uh, Wiener Schnitzel.
Okay, thank you.
Can you confirm the location of where we have to meet, uh, to do the volunteering?
Yeah, it's gonna be in front of City Hall at fourteen-seven-one-seven Buren, at nine AM on Saturday, eighteenth.
You said eighteenth? Okay. That's all you got?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's hear from Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
Well, I have nothing to-
We do have another item. Yes, yes.
Yeah, jumping the gun again.
Let's do another item. Okay. Items from council members. Consideration of the South Bay Council of Government's potential membership dues increase.
You know, while I'm laughing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Um, on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, the South Bay City Council of Government issued a notice of intent to increase the annual membership dues for all member agencies. Um, this was a procedural step necessary sixty days prior to proposed action being presented to the COG Board of Directors for final approval, which is scheduled to go before the board on April twenty-seventh. The notice of intent did not include any specific increase to the city of Longdale, um, at this time. However, in review of the February twenty-third agenda packet, it appears that if the dues were to be approved by the standing committee, um, the dues will increase from fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifteen to seventeen-hundred dot thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars per year. Uh, this potential increase may include a four-point-five-percent CPI three-year average and also the cost, uh, for the special assessment fee of thirty-two-fifty for a planner, um, that the city has previously declined to participate in. Um, this item is being presented to council this evening for review and discussion at the request of Councilmember Kearney. Um, once the fee, the final fees, um, have been approved by the Board of Directors and received by city staff, um, city will present the cost information to city council for your review and consideration, um, during the upcoming budget cycle for the new, um, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Um, this concludes staff reports. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any que, uh, questions?
I don't have a question, but I do wanna bring up a point of clarification because, um, as mentioned, the South Bay Cities Council of Government discussed a couple of years ago, um, doing a special assessment to fund a regional planner that would assist all the cities with, um, items that they might wanna offload from their staff. Now, this was never actually discussed with the council as a whole. I, when I was aware of it, I believe I directed it to go to the subcommittee, the finance subcommittee to discuss and if they were okay with it to bring it to the board for recommendations. So, I do wanna make that specification.
Do a commercial break?
Star Wars. Luke, the force be with you.
Gotta find that spaceship.
Oh, someone left their phone. Okay, so I, I did wanna bring that, um, that that actually was never discussed with the council, whether or not that was something that they wanted to approve, um, as a whole. And so, um, I have the list of what the planner was intended for. I'm happy to forward that to the rest of the council, but, um, I just wanted to make that clarification.
I would. I guess my question would be, um, so there's other COGS like the Gateway City COGS or what have you. Do we have any idea what their membership to their COG or similarly situated?
I don't. I do not. Um, I could do research for you and bring that back to you, but I don't have that information.
Yeah.
So, I do know that the Gateway City COG, from what I understand, is more expensive, but I, that could be wrong. Because of the way the structure of the budget's set up, they actually have a salaried executive director. Ours is set up with a management contract. So, it's different. It's set up the similar way that contract cities are set up where they, the EDs aren't employees or they're contractors and, um, versus employees, which I think the Gateway City has, and they have benefits and all that stuff. So, they're a bit different in the way that they're set up. And so, I guess, um, I mean, you brought it forward, so I'm curious to see what your concerns are. But, um, before I kinda jump into the discussion, 'cause I have sat on the budget subcommittee, um, to hear kind of the discussion that was going on with the other cities, uh, the thought process behind what was brought forward.
Well, first of all, like you said about Burdette, the planner, I believe we did bring that forward, Shirley and I, to this council and we agreed at the time that we didn't need a planner. That was number one. And then you turn the page over, I, you know, a COG might be great. I don't trust Jack as far as I can throw her. And then the second page, it says, "A climate action plan," which we turned down and it's in there. So, what they're trying to do is stick all these things in here and assess it to the city. And if you keep going in the booklet, which I did, you go into the, uh, ad hoc finance thing and it's broke down in three groups, it says. Well, if you look at Longdale, starting in fifteen, all the way up to twenty-twenty-twenty, our assessments kept going up. At twenty, uh, nineteen-twenty, we were paying fourteen-three-fifteen. Lamida, which is the same size as Longdale, started out at eight thousand and their assessment for twen- nineteen-twenty is only ten-thousand-seven-forty-five. You go down to Rancho Palos Verdes, which has maybe not as many residents, but, uh, the size of the city, they're paying less than us. Keep going and you look at the size of the city and there's several on here. You dues and assessment scenarios. Hermosa Beach is less than us, Longdale, what's us, Lamida, Ranch, uh, Palos Verdes State, Rancho Palos Verdes, Rolling Hills, they're all smaller than us. I mean, rolling, same size as us, but they're paying less. I think this is a crock. I mean, you're on the board, you say it's fine, but I know we brought the planner forward and this council decided we did need a planner for nothing and we declined the climate change, but it's all stuck into these assessments.
Okay, so now I'm gonna go on the assessment. The assessments aren't based off of population. There's a specific formula that they bring up, um, for the, for, sorry, for the dues, for the dues specifically. Is that the staff report? Is that, and, and it also came up, someone else questioned the, the, um, the formula. And I haven't quite sat in on those, those, I haven't sat in on where they actually go over the formula. They said they're more than happy to have a discussion regarding how they calculate those. Um, and they're also open to suggestions of what cities would like to see the formula as. Um, and so, it, it's not solely based off of, you know, one's smaller than the other. I can't remember the exact makeup of it. Um, and then to bring up increases, I mean, you can say the same for the league. The league has been increasing, contract cities has been increasing. Um, I'm, I haven't looked at SCAG, but, you know, those all include increases as well. Now, with regards to the executive director, I mean, this is a body of sixteen cities. So, to say that she has complete control over everything, you know, it's, I mean, you have at the end of the day, the cities sitting there and deciding what they wanna see for the region as a whole. COG puts on a lot of events, free events for residents and whatnot, um, more than I can say for some of what the other memberships put on. Like I, you know, if we're gonna talk about one, then I think we, you know, if you're going in that direction, I think we should discuss all the memberships, what we get out of each of them. And, you know, maybe assess, 'cause I mean, I think it's a, having a regional membership, you know, you make a lot of connections. There's grants that get funded through the COG that we can be applying for. I don't know if we have been actively applying for, but we could offset some of the costs of what we're paying the membership dues. And so, I think that's something that we need to look at seriously. Um, they're funding through Measure H, I think, um, homeless coordinators or, I, I'm not sure, quite sure what the specific term is. But there's ways of working it to your advantage where you can actually get more out of it. The membership dues, they showed us the chart, eight percent of the budget are membership dues. The other, um, I think it's eighty percent government grants, contracts and whatnot. So, you know, you do get a lot out of there. I think we even had one of our projects, Redondo Beach Boulevard, was funded through funds that came through the COG. So, you know, you can look at it on that aspect, but I, I don't think that one person should dictate, you know, 'cause that, you know, you have changeover in staff. That's not always gonna be the same person. And once you budget it, once you take that out of the budget, it's, um, gonna be very hard to implement it back in trying to find the funds when you've already said it. And, but I just think it, it's worth it from what I've seen and I wish we would make more of an effort to apply for some of these monies that they have um, and be more active with that. And that's just my take on it. Um, you know, I do, this will be considered coming up in April. And so, you know, I, if this council collectively comes with a vote of, "We don't want this option." There were a couple of other options that were listed on there as far as what we wanted to see. Um, however, kind of hearing what member cities, all of them were willing to pay for the regional planner. Um, and if you look in the, I believe, notes that they had previously sent, they've even requested, "What would your city like the planner to work on?" And from what I understand, you know, um, we probably could augment some stuff. I'm not saying, you know, this is gonna be perfect, but, um, I, I don't remember having this conversation quite honestly on the dais, but, you know, and we skipped it for two years. And so, now they're trying to put it as part of the budget. You know, you're welcome to vote. Like I said, you're welcome to vote how you want and I will go back and that'll be my vote. Um, but, um, I do, I don't think that we should, um, I don't think this is a membership that I wanna see end.
I'm sorry, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council, there was a, a question about the formula. It's my understanding that the formula is based on the member agency's budget and population.
It's currently, the assessment has placed cities in three population groups, whereas the dues is accommodation of the population and their general fund budget for the city.
So, the dues are budget and population. The special assessment, I can't remember how they came up with that, but they're planning to, if they adopt it in the budget, they're just gonna plug in to the formula they have for the membership and that'll come up with how much you're paying for the planner essentially. Um.
As far as these grants and things, how do we get a list of all of them that we are possibly not participating in right now?
Um, they usually, they're pretty good about sending out, uh, emails to staff and including them.
I, I send everything. I probably duplicate some of the stuff, 'cause I ask them. They send it to the council and I send out whatever I get generally. But I've learned now that they're already sending it to you guys, so I send out everything. And I know we do look at grants for public works. I think that's our extent.
Is there any way that we, I don't like making a decision tonight without a little more information in front of me. And I feel like, okay, then somebody needs to take a hard look and get back to us and, and let us know what things could we utilize. Is it, is it worth the membership?
So, I brought up one, which was the, they have some Measure H funds, they have some Measure M funds. So, um, that, well, you know, depending, and then they have, there's various other pots that they, they end up getting. Um, like I said, I think one we did identify for Redondo Beach, which we use for the improvements. Um, I can't remember the amount, but it runs in cycles and so you have to, um, and we could probably even get a list of what we have in the past applied for and gotten. Um, because if it's, you know, hundreds of thousands, then that makes up for what you're paying in dues. Um, I guess the, the big question right now would be, um, the special assessment. And whether, you know, you know, we say there's not a need, but is there something that you could potentially offload from staff, um, that the COG could take on? Um, you know, and that ends up saving you staff time and whatnot. Um, and then I'm sure because they deal with all the other cities, they probably have a better scope of regionally what cities, you know. I think one of the things they did was like an ADU calculator for residents who could go online and see, um, you know, in their city. I, I'm not quite sure of the specifics, but they can look and see what the requirements were and whatnot and all of that. So, it's just helpful little things that they put on, so.
Is there need for a planner if we were to use them? I mean, if we were to say yes, could we use the planner?
To the outsourced, yeah, basically.
Or could we use that additional body to help us out?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we've looked at this several times in a row, the subcommittee. I mean, at least from all my years here, I've have, I've used them on the climate action plan. But that's the only thing, I don't know what we could use them for. We have our own staff. Our staff are highly specialized for what we do. Uh, but they do regional things. We don't do regional things. We do Longdale things, so, but that's solely up to-
But is that something we could ask them if they could be used for Longdale things instead of regional things?
Well, we, I mean, they, they would look at things that they're doing. That's their, what the COG does, not what specifically we do. We do zoning, land use, SEQA. We do our own things. They don't, they, you know, one thing, we, we've looked at this several times. We've been asked this over the years. For us, at least on the community development, we, we've not seen a need for this regional planner, but they do regional things. We don't do regional things. So, we're different. We're do, you know, the, the city thing. So, it's, it's a lot different. Their planner's different than ours.
So, the other cities that are opting in to the planner, they're doing regional things? They're not doing city things?
I, I don't know what other cities are doing. I don't know what the, the reason for the regional planner. If you want my ass- assessment, I've said it over and over. There's no need for the planner.
So, let, so let me ask this. So, I'm just, uh, clear on, on the planner. And maybe you might know. So, and it's kinda like what you was going at. I know the planner does regional, is a regional planner, 'cause the COG is a regional organization. But so that we feel that we actually are benefiting from the, um, the planner, let's say, over and above regional, right, um, uh, uh, planning. Could we have a scenario to where the planner is obligated to provide X amount of hours of planning services for Longdale-specific, um, planning activities?
It sounds like they're still formulating what the person would do. I'm looking at the email that was sent to the city manager and myself about what the planner is accomplishing for the cities. And it did say that, um, "Begin by conducting one-on-one interviews with, um, community development directors to determine their priorities, opportunities and challenges, um, to inform the, the, uh, regional planning services." Um, so, and then it also says that examples, you know, they've provided even research for some of the staff and provided memos for, in that nature. Um, you know, there, I, you know, I, I don't know if we could even use them to identify, you know, funding sources for certain things or, or that nature. I wouldn't know. Most of the cities use the first two years to kind of fill out what they wanted to. We just rejected it right off the bat. The other ones liked it so much, they're re, ready to move forward, so we're kinda behind in the- kinda behind in the game at this point. And honestly, I feel as though they are going to end up adopting that. That doesn't mean to say they won't work with us, and we could probably, you know, talk about it. Um, but I don't see them saying that they will only work on certain things. I'm sure if there's one activity that could relieve staff, this person could, you know, take off some of the load, or if there's something that they work on. So I don't know that you can necessarily say we don't need them, because, um, you know, we hire people all the time, contractors and whatnot, to supplement staff, so, um, I don't agree with that philosophy.
Are, are you able to find out what duties they can perform for us prior to us making decisions?
No, definitely. Um, I'm happy to have that conversation. We could even invite the planner over and see, you know, have a preliminary talk about it, um, probably before the next meeting, and talk about what are some things that you could provide. I mean, you know, the amounts, what, three grand or so, so, you know, for whatever you can get for that amount, but see if it offloads. Um, and then I think there's a benefit to having someone that does work regionally, because they will be able to provide input on what other cities are kind of doing and whatnot, and I think there's always a benefit to that. And then if we wanna bring it to the next meeting and talk about whether it's something we wanna go for, cause this is gonna come before end April, so we still have time.
So let me ask you a verdict. If we decide not to go with the regional planner, can we still be a member, or will we be exempt because we don't go along with the regional planner?
Um, that would have to be another, whole nother conversation. I would have to see, because there is the other members, so.
Yeah.
You know, and the way that, the way that they, staff explained it was, because someone brought up their thought during the, the meeting, that, oh, well, can it be if you want, keep it if you want it, if you don't want it. And, um, Jackie brought up, well, it's kinda hard to budget if you have a person and you're set to pay them a certain amount. If people are dropping off one year, dropping on one year, you can't really budget for something like that, like an add-on or something. So, you know, budgeting-wise, it's just not helpful if, if you know that, um, people are gonna be opting in one year and not opting in the next.
Oh, what, the budget is a one-year budget cycle or two-year budget cycle?
I'd say one-year budget.
Yeah, every year.
Every year's a one-year budget cycle, yeah.
And someone else brought up a concern, and they said, we're happy and talking eventually. Um, so, you know, like I said, um, we can discuss whether there's a need. If not, I can bring up the concerns and see if they wanna make adjustments, just because we've never, um, used the planner, so maybe that would be a good way to say, you know, if we wanna try it out and see whether we think it's of value.
And so is the planner, um, I know that's gonna be incorporated in the, in the dues, increase of the dues, but is that in the form of assessment, or just...
It'll just be lumped in.
Look, see, I think I would feel, and I'm still, um, digesting it, I think I would feel comfortable, one, knowing that the planner is working on a project that Landale cares about, one. And then, two, um, if they're working on at least some project, to at least some degree, that's Landale-specific. And then, three, if it was an assessment, because in assessments, it's easier, once the, its, its mission has been fulfilled, so to speak, then assessments, by the fact that it's an assessment, should, should drop, more so than, than if you're decreasing dues, right? Let's say if you have an assessment, and you're a condo association to, to build a, a new, um, roof. Well, once the roof is, you know, built, not built, you know, constructed and you paid off or what have you, then the assessment, theoretically, there is no more assessment, right? Because you've already, you know, as opposed to the, the dues, gonna be the dues, and the dues is not, dues is never gonna be reduced, right? So the dues is not gonna be reduced, so.
They're only ever gonna go up.
Yeah.
I mean, look, the rest of the memberships, they're all going up.
So the membership will go up, but if it's an assessment, then once that's no longer, because what's happening is, if it's, like I say, for instance, if it's part of the, the, um, part of the overall dues, right, and the cog decides, you know what, this is not working out, we don't need, we don't need a planner, you know, after all, what have you, right? But then the dues are not gonna drop. But if it was an assessment, then it would, by nature, it would drop, because you're no lo- longer using that ac- activity, right, for, for which the assessment was, you know, um, originated from. That's why I feel better if it was the assessment, even though, at the end of the day, it's gonna s- still be the same amount, the three thousand.
Okay, and we, uh, do it, where did I say to have the planner here? To see what he has to say, and run his idea, see what he, what the, uh, some of the grants or funding we can get from the cog?
But I'm, I'm open, I mean, everyone knows my relationship with the, with the cog, but I never wanna throw out the baby with the back one, right? And so, you know, if it's some, uh, benefits, I just have to be able to, to understand that, you know, myself, you know, and once I understand it, you know, how I feel about organizations, it's, that's a whole different, you know, issue, whatever, I have no problem working with the, uh, with the cog, um, as I can understand it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, um, add something. Traditionally, when we do receive the invoices, um, it includes, um, the accomplishments the board has had over the last, the previous year, and what the money would be utilized for. So, um, and I believe at the next meeting, um, the board is gonna talk about what these increased dues would, uh, basically pay for. So there would be changes in what the cog would be responsible for, for the new fiscal year. So I think that that is something that typically will come with the invoice, and we'll definitely look out for that when we do receive it.
And perhaps that's something we can add on the agenda, cause they were also talking about some of the projects that they wanted to look at regionally. Um, you know, whether it be led, you know, advocacy for legislation, um, whether it be, I mean, just a number of, of ideas. So, you know, that's something too, we could say we wanna direct the cog to look at, um, that would benefit our city. Um, you know, that's included in the dues, but, um, yeah, I'm, think it'd be, can bring back more information, have a conversation and see, because ultimately, my vote will just reflect whatever the whole council ends up voting on.
Any, anything else? Do you need any, um, what else you need from us? Well, make sure you have what you need.
Um, set this for the next meeting. In the meantime, set a meeting with the planner, um, to talk about what possible, um, work he could do for the city of Londo specifically.
Yeah, I'll be good with that. Is that everybody un- understood that?
Yeah.
Yeah, understood.
Okay, with that, okay. So that'd be the, the direction. Thank you for taking that on. I know it's, it's a challenging, um, situation. I appreciate that. Okay, so that would be item thirteen. Okay, item fourteen. Um, comments from the council, let's hear from them.
You ready to say?
Yes.
I have nothing to report, but I do want to also, um, state exactly what Michael Reyes says. This week is cleanup re- week, with as much junk as we have. I know I'm walking around my house right now currently, eyeballing things and thinking, huh, what can I get rid of? Let's clean 'em out, guys. Residents, let's, let's get it to the curb. We don't have to pay for this for, to have them pick up our large bulky items this week. They're, it's part of their contract with us. So let's get out as much as we can. That's it.
Thank you.
And I did attend one meeting, that was a metro meeting on two twenty-five, twenty-three at Londo High School.
Oh, I did too.
Yeah, Rhonda was there too, but she don't remember. She was drinking in forty-eight.
Don't say that.
It was, I think it was well attended. Well, the people we had there were very outspoken. I was proud of the council, they got up and spoke. Kudos to you got ladies and gentlemen, and, well, gentleman, had a restraint on him. Uh, and I just wanna say that we had a resident, the first meeting, that had a heart attack there. I wish him well. I hope he's doing fine. There's been no contract with him, but, uh, he's a diehard Londo resident, and he'd do anything for this city. And I wish him well, and I'm glad we, uh, sent him. I won't say we got the flowers, but, uh, flowers. Thank you, pass it on.
Um, so I attended the metro meeting as well. Um, they didn't go the full-time that they advertised as, um, but, you know, we go on. Um, I did attend the South Bay Cities Council of Government Steering Committee, which we spoke in depth about. Um, I did wanna mention, however, that there is a traffic committee meeting on the thirteenth, is it the thirteenth? Let me look at my calendar real quick. Um, in that discussion, they will be, um, deciding on which recommendation for the metro line that they will be taking. So this is the other cities that are gonna be deciding. Um, so I will be there, and I believe staff will be in attendance as well. Um, and then, um, I did wanna bring up, if we could, um, I haven't, I believe the budget subcommittee spoke about ARPA funds. Um, and I don't remember getting an update, so maybe if we could get an update on so far what has been agreed. I'm sure many of, much of it will come during the budget discussion. Um, and then also, it, it might be helpful, just so I can kinda see how the funds are being down, cause I know we voted on a few, a couple projects so far with that. And then, um, just bringing up again, you know, um, it's a good discussion to have our memberships, uh, bring up our memberships and what we're getting out of them, what we're paying, what the increases have been, um, and how, whether or not it's a benefit to our city. Um, I think we also need to look at a couple contracts that we have as well. Um, you know, insurances, um, you know, we're probably gonna have to have a discussion also about the sheriff's contract as well. So I think it's a good discussion to have, in which we talk about, um, you know, if, if there's a, another route that we could possibly take, or if we believe that those all provide a great benefit. And with that, I'll pass it on.
Cravers.
Um, I attended the metro meeting on the twenty-fifth. Like, uh, Pat said, it was well-attended. Our citizens spoke, and I hope Metro was listening to them, not to their po- the pockets, um, because I am concerned that it's gonna go right through the middle of families, or family homes, backyards, and the noise, it's, they say it's not gonna affect us, but it will affect. Um, I have, uh, colleagues, uh, work colleagues that live right next to the blue line, and they hear it all day long. So the kids are inside all day. Um, on three-two, on March second, I attended the League of California Cities, uh, the Los Angeles Division, uh, General Meeting, um, well-attended too. The, the cog was there, um, and, uh, you know, they spoke about, uh, memberships. Um, also, I have a question for staff. Um, it's been almost a year since that street, uh, corner of one forty-seventh and Kingsdale was not, was worked on, and it's not finished yet. Do we have an update, or if that, that company can't fix it, could we find a different company?
Ahmad, can you come up and, Council? Ahmad?
Yes.
Come up and answer for the mayor and council, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have an update on the repairs of one forty-seventh and Kingsdale? If that company can't fix it, can we find a different company? Um, there's families that are, are, there's a person that has a wheelchair. He has to go through the middle of the street and then get back on someone's driveway, just because he can't go down the handicap ramps.
I have, I have good news for you.
Okay, give me.
Kingsdale and one forty-seven, that whole block, uh, all the way to north.
One forty-fifth.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That's in the queue for Calban to put the asphalt and all the necessary improvements, uh, for the roadway. Uh, so that, the help is on the way.
Do we know, do we have an ETA?
ETA is probably two to three weeks. You know, I'm trying to get the best price for the asphalt, uh, from them, uh, and I may be negotiating for the parking lot next door to the city hall.
Okay.
Uh, so, a- and plus all the alleys and everything. So help is on the way.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll report to the city manager as to the exact date.
All right, thank you.
My apology, I didn't get the call.
That's all right. And that would be all, thank you.
Okay, very, very good.
Thank you.
So, um, I too attended the, um, the metro, uh, meeting at, um, Londo High School, and I was informed that, at the meeting prior, um, to that, apparently, um, I was in, um, what, the word, the term of art they use, I was in, um, what was I, I was, what was the term?
You didn't follow the code of conduct.
No, it was not that I didn't follow the code of conduct, but I was in violation of the code of conduct.
Violation, sorry.
That's a little different.
I'm correct. I'm, I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
Right, right. That apparently, yeah, I violated the code of conduct at the meeting, um, prior, um, to, obviously, um, they have a rule about you being, um, passionate about, you know, representing, um, the, um, your community, and passionate about, you know, the, um, the other speakers. I'm sure I wasn't the only one in violation. If, 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 if that put me in violation, some other speakers was definitely in violation, right? Because they definitely was passionate about, you know, their, their opposition, um, to a metro, um, um, project adversely, adversely affecting, um, our community, and as they should be, and I welcome such. Um, with, with that, I just wanted to thank those who was able to come out, uh, to the meeting. Um, I did see some new people, and so that was encouraging, that some new people came out, um, to the, um, to the meeting. And like you said, we hope that, uh, Metro, um, has heard us. We will continue to, um, to speak, um, um, to Metro on this issue. Um, we gearing up, as the city manager has, um, um, inferred, um, to, to do all we can do, um, regarding this issue. So we will continue the fight in that regards. Yes, ma'am.
I do remember something I'm supposed to ask on behalf of one of our residents. Is there any way that we can check with the chamber? This resident asked me, what has the chamber done to get the word out on the Hawthorne Boulevard businesses?
Don't let.
Is that something we can look into?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we can check into that, but I don't believe they've, I mean, I have not heard from any businesses that have interacted with the chamber. So, I mean, but we can just follow up with the chamber, and have, uh, staff to check, double follow up with the chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say that, but I didn't wanna be wise, you know? Anyway, so, um, thank you for that. And I also wanna update on, can we get an update on the Manhattan Beach, um, Inglewood Avenue, um, project? It seemed like that's coming along, but it's been in the works for a while.
Are we talking about the road construction improvements? So the city manager finally did get ahold of me. Um, I didn't get a chance to call back.
You are the city manager?
The city manager from Redondo Beach.
Okay.
So we did, I did contact and reach out. I guess he didn't get his emails. So before I went over to visit, um, like on the Galleria, I had Diane just reach out to her staff, and it turned out, maybe, maybe my emails went to spam, perhaps. So he did call me, I have his message. So he is, he's working with, Ahmad's been working with their public works guy. They did, uh, nail down some stuff, but I will follow up with him tomorrow and just find out and get a firm date when this'll all be done. And I'll send an email to the council. Sorry about that, I meant to bring that up, that he did break through and finally get ahold of me on Thursday.
I'm sure those who commute to work using that route to get to the, um, freeway would be delighted to hear that it's gonna wrap up, um, soon. It looks like it's wrapping up, but it's, looked like it's been wrapping up for a while. So, so thank you for that. Okay, with that, that's all we have. We do have a closed, um, a closed session, a conference with legal counsel concerning litigation. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us the provision of the closed, um, session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, the council will conduct a closed session under Government Code, section five four nine five six point nine D four. That is potential initiation of litigation. There's one case. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm, thank you. We will... We will now go to closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, since the closed session was with special counsel, um, the city manager will give the report tonight. Thank you. Yeah.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Council, no reportable action tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that report. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Londo City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, in these council chambers. It's now eight fifty-seven. We are adjourned.